Good evening and welcome to the April 9th meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded this evening for all of you that are at home by East Hampton Public Access Cable. And we certainly would like to recognize and thank the volunteers from Public Access Cable and especially Kathy who is recording for us this evening. If you are interested in volunteering or helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy at (413) 203-1360. Now before I turn announcements over to Superintendent Folesby, I would like to welcome Laura Scott this evening as the new member of the East Hampton School Committee. Laura was appointed to fill the vacancy at a joint convention meeting of the school committee and the city council where five outstanding candidates petitioned to be the member of the school committee and Laura was chosen. So welcome Laura.
Thank you.
And now I will turn it over to you for announcements.
Okay, thank you Nancy. The next school committee meetings are May 14th and 28th and June 18th, 2013. Elementary Cultural Festival is scheduled for April 11th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a great event, don't miss it. There is no school April 15th through and including Monday, April 22nd due to spring break, teacher professional development and the East Hampton High School Move-In Day, big day for all of us. White Brook Middle School Transition Night is Wednesday, April 24th. Kindergarten Screening will be held at Maple School on May 2nd and May 3rd. High School Junior/Senior Prom is Friday, May 3rd at Chez Joseph. White Brook Middle School Spring Concert is Thursday, May 23rd. There is a half-day of school on Friday, May 24th due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school Monday, May 27th due to Memorial Day. Center Pepin All-School Show is at 9:30 a.m. on May 29th and 30th. White Brook Middle School Washington DC Trip is Wednesday through Friday, May 29th through 31st. Center Pepin 4th Grade Visit to White Brook Middle School is May 31st. Senior Banquet and Harbor Cruise is Friday, May 31st. Center Pepin Book Fair is June 3rd through 6th. Senior Outing is Monday, June 3rd at High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut. White Brook Middle School Enrichment Night is Monday, June 3rd. Senior Class Night is Wednesday, June 5th. Elementary Ice Cream Social Art Show and Book Fair is June 6th. 2013 Graduation is Friday, June 7th at 7:00 p.m. White Brook Middle School Awards Night is Wednesday, June 12th. Center Pepin Field Day is June 21st. And White Brook Middle School 8th Grade Continuation is scheduled for the last day of school. The last day of school is currently scheduled for Wednesday, June 26th which is a half-day for students and let's hope that day holds.
No more snow days.
No more snow days.
Nancy, do you know where the graduation will be held? Will it be held in the new?
In the gymnasium, the new gymnasium.
Great.
Air-conditioned by the way.
Oh wow.
We're excited about that.
Do we know that it works yet?
No, we don't know that actually, but it will by then.
I'm not sure the chiller's been run yet.
Okay, alright. We have our fingers crossed.
Correspondents? I don't think we have any. And, but we do have a gift. Do I hear a motion?
I would move that the school committee vote to accept a gift from ExxonMobil Corporation Educational Alliance Program with gratitude to Don Newman of East Hampton Mobile for her efforts in obtaining that gift.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none.
That was terrific.
Thank you.
We need more people to do that.
Alright. At this time, I would like to invite all of you that are out there and have any, let's not tell them there's hardly anyone out there. They don't know that. If you, seriously, if you have a topic that you would like to speak to the school committee about and it is not on the agenda, then now is your chance to come to the podium and give your name and speak.
Hi, I'm Kathy Lynch from East Hampton Community Access Television. I also serve on the Local Works Subcommittee of the EDIC and we just wanted to invite all of you and the, well, the entire town and everyone in a 10-mile radius to take our Local Preferences Survey which is available online on our website, localworks easthampton.org. It will also, there'll be hard copy that will come out in the summit this weekend.
Okay. Thank you Kathy.
Can I ask a que, and I apologize Nancy for not having asked earlier, is there an occasion when we will, or did I miss the announcement about the Grin Spoon Award?
No, the Grin Spoon Award hat, well, it won't, we're celebrating it on April 25th.
Okay.
We did have an announcement in the paper.
Right, that's where I learned.
Right, the dinner's on the 25th.
So we'll talk about it as a committee after the 25th then, because I know that there's East Hampton teachers who are going to be recognized.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you.
I believe that we now have a presentation?
Well, we were supposed to have a presentation this evening by the Students Against Destructive Decisions and we were contacted this week, Nancy Dunn, who is their advisor, asked if we could postpone it to a later date because of a number of issues that were going on.
It will be in May.
In May, we've rescheduled it to May.
Alright, thank you.
One's away.
Rescheduled for May.
Yes.
Alright. At this time, we have some Subcommittee Reports. Finance Committee?
No report.
Alright. Policy Committee? Policy Review Subcommittee?
We will have three new policies brought forward to the school committee meeting, school committee at our next meeting for a first reading.
Alright.
Those are mentioned in the. And we have those in our minutes.
Right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I'm interested in asking the Finance Subcommittee to look at the cost savings of closing Parson Street School and abandoning the property so it can be disposed of.
I think this is the appropriate time to present that as a topic to Finance Committee.
So noted.
Okay. And, let's see, CES update?
We have not met since our last.
Alrighty. And Bailey, our student representative, what's the word?
Well, the high school's a little crazy right now because all of the teachers are packing up their rooms, so they're kind of trying to go through all of their stuff and pack it up, seeing what they need to use this week and what they don't need to use. Students are very busy getting ready for their AP exams which will start in May.
Oh, that's right.
And we just finished giving student tours in the new building, so all of the students have seen the building up to this point. Whether they paid attention to where their classes are or not, I don't know. Tours for the community are being held on April 27th and this week is GSA, or Gay-Straight Alliance Pride Week, they're doing the Spirit Week this week.
Okay.
All different themes from them and a lot of the juniors and seniors are getting very excited for prom in the next few weeks on May 3rd.
Alright, lots of exciting things. Bailey, I just, I don't know if this is an appropriate question for now, but I'm just kind of interested, is there any kind of, what is the word? Ceremony of leaving the old school?
No.
I just wondered, you know, I just have this, we're just gonna walk away, right?
Which cheers, I think.
We're throwing rose petals, right?
On Friday, there probably will be some tears from students, especially seniors that have been in the building for four years now and have made a lot of memories there. The freshmen, I don't know how many memories they've made because they haven't been in there as long, so they'll have the new building for four years, but.
Do we know the times for the public open house at the school on the 27th?
We do. Laura, do you remember what we decided?
Nine to two, 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 27th.
Thank you.
Yes. Alright. We discussed a number of different times and I forgot to look before we sat down tonight.
Alright, thank you Bailey.
You're welcome.
Are you sad to leave the old building?
A little bit, yeah. I'm excited for the new building and all the new stuff that we're gonna have, but I've made a lot of memories in the old building.
Alright, well at least it'll be right there for you for a while, you can just look out the window.
That's true.
Okay, thanks a lot. Alright, are there any other topics? I don't have them on my agenda for now, but let's move to Superintendent Folesby's report.
Yes, I was asked by Jamie Webb if he could come and give the school committee a report on the Schools and the Community Preservation Act, so Jamie?
Yes, please, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm the Assistant City Planner, Jamie Webb. Supposed to be joined tonight by the Chair of the CPA Committee Alexis Schneeflock, she's not here right now. We do have a member of the CPA Committee, Harry Schuman, who's the representative of the Planning Board. So I just wanted to talk to you briefly tonight about the Community Preservation Act and how the School Department and the CPA Committee can work to get some projects completed. Some background on the CPA. In 2001, the city passed the Community Preservation Act and basically it adds a 3% surcharge to any land valued over $100,000 and it's matched by the state at the end of the year. Currently, the CPA Committee has a budget of about $800,000 and the membership of the committee is made up of members from city boards and committees as well as representatives of the city council and the mayor. In relationship to the schools, the CPA Committee can fund land, can fund the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for outdoor recreational use. It's possible if you have historic structures that the CPA Committee can fund the preservation and rehabilitation of, and restoration of historic structures. And then unlikely that it relates to the School Department, but the CPA Committee also funds the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space and the support of affordable So currently, the CPA Committee is working on a preservation plan that hopes to plan for the many conflicting needs and user groups within the city that are looking for this money. While it seems like $800,000 seems like a lot of money, it goes very quickly when you start using it for recreation projects or historic preservation work or the purchasing of land for open space. So the preservation plan will assess the current resources and needs of the community as well as identifying possibilities for future projects and expenditures. They're also looking to create a method for prioritizing between different projects within a category and as well as between categories. And the CPA Committee's looking for input from boards and city organizations and residents on this process, on this plan to help guide this plan. They, we expect that the plan will be finished by the end of July. So why I'm here tonight is basically to get the school committee's needs and priorities. As I see it, or as the Planning Department sees it, the School Department owns and uses land for recreational purposes and there may be historic structures as well. Recent law changes at the state level make the funding of recreation projects much easier and as such, we've actually seen an increase in recreation projects by user groups that use the fields but don't necessarily own the fields. And those applications actually have to come from the land-owning entity so that way when the funds are appropriated that the project doesn't just disappear along with the money. So we had a request recently from the East Hampton Friends of Football to do a project at the White Brook Middle School and it was unclear to the CPA Committee what the priority was for this project in relationship to other School Department projects. So I'm here tonight to sort of start that conversation and hopefully we'll begin a dialogue over what the school committee can, is looking for, what their priorities are and then when that becomes published in the plan, obviously there'll be drafts circulating around for comment and feedback. So what we need really is a list of resources from the School Department or the school committee, like what the school committee has for outdoor recreation space or open space or places for historic properties within the city. And then from that, a list of needs for potential projects. For instance, the White Brook Middle School football field, if there's other fields that the School Department needs rehabilitated, maybe lighting for night games or if there's bleachers or other facilities that the School Department would like to have for recreational opportunities but doesn't have in its budget. There's, you know, lots of possibilities for access to outdoor education programs through connecting to conservation land and open space, trail work, safe routes to schools. Again, you know, trail work, if there's somehow a plan that would connect properties through these recreational trails or after-school programs, if there's again outdoor recreational facilities.
It doesn't fund program costs.
Right, thank you.
It's an acquisition repair fund?
Right. Right. So, I don't, I assume that this is the beginning of the conversation for the school committee to start identifying the needs and resources, so if there's any questions?
Well, and I just want to frame it in that the Friends of Football came to us a month or so ago, I believe, to present their request to be able to improve the current, well, to look at two pieces of land next to White Brook as potential spots for a new football field. Given the fact that the football field that we currently have is really approaching a state of deterioration so that it is beginning to be considered perhaps unsafe for our students. We don't have lighting and we don't have, you know, good facilities for football and a number of our students participate in this very good activity and there's a lot of community interest. And I know we have Amy Gallett here this evening from the Friends of Football. So that was, that was how that happened and apparently the Friends of Football came to the CPA and now we're learning a little bit more about how the CPA works and the school committee or School Department and I guess I'm not clear about that either, whether the approval, the application comes from the School Department or from the school committee?
It would be, I guess logically from the department, but I suspect that the department isn't going to do anything unless the school committee endorses it. The management definitely has to come from staff. So project management, bidding, all of that's going to have to be managed by School Department staff.
Thank you Mike, that clarified my idea. Yes, go ahead.
Just to clarify, you had mentioned a figure of $800,000. Am I understanding correctly that potentially we would be able to take advantage once we prioritize of the full $800,000?
Unlikely.
That is what you have to the entire city of East Hampton?
Yes. And the way that the funding works is that 30% of the funds are set aside each year for the different categories of community preservation, sorry, historic preservation, open space and recreation, and the affordable housing. So the remainder, the other approximately 70%, is left to the discretion of the committee for how they want to spend it. And that's really where we're looking at for, or the committee's looking at how to prioritize that remaining funds.
Oh Mike.
Just to add, essentially the CPA funds are gondored through a surcharge on the income taxes, about $270,000 a year, I think that comes in through that surcharge and the state matches a portion of that. In some years, 100%, these days, less because it's funded through a fee on real estate transactions and so sales are down a bit and so the fees aren't coming in enough to completely match all of the communities, but there's a match every year of some sort.
In 2012, this state matched approximately 22% of the city's total funds.
Mr. Webb, Jamie, I just have a clarification question because I know that when Friends of Football came to speak to the school committee, we passed a motion in support of their attempt, their desire, their plan to redo the football areas at White Brook. So, am I hearing you say that in order for your organization to consider Friends of Football ask, that it must come from us?
Well, as the mayor said, that it would come from the School Department, but again, unlikely that the School Department would act on their own without consulting the school committee.
So the school committee's endorsed the project, but we haven't asked or directed the department to manage the project. So this is going to be a public works construction project that'll have to be managed by school staff.
Alright.
So I think the ask is for design work and project management and all of that sort of thing and I'm sure they can talk about the ask. But, but the procurement has to be a public procurement. It's a prevailing wage job, it has to be as if the school was spending money that had been directly appropriated to it. It'll be appropriated under their control from the CPA fund if it's approved by the CPA Committee.
Right.
The CPA Committee doesn't have the capacity to manage a project and projects can't be undertaken by, they can't be private projects undertaken with public funds, so it has to be undertaken by a public entity.
Alright. I think I understand that because, and, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud, Jamie, but the Friends of Football, I keep pointing to the Friends of Football, that does not mean that they can't go also elsewhere to look for money for their projects.
That's true. I mean, I'll give you, I'll give you an example that I think relates perfectly well. The baseball groups worked with the Park and Rec Department to be able to fund improvements to the baseball fields. They are going to apply for and probably receive CPA funding for a project that's happened in the past and the Friends group on the baseball side, the Little League, have put in additional assets. So they haven't bought, they haven't given the Park and Rec Department money to buy something, but once the project was completed, they've added to the project. So they can bring in their own folks to build dugouts or whatever and it doesn't have to become a public prevailing wage project.
Alright.
And so that's generally how these things work is that the youth group, the Friends group in this instance, would participate in the project, they'd be the idea people, obviously they'll, you know, they'll be, get very involved in how it ends up getting designed and that sort of thing along with the School Department. And then they'll come in at pieces that may not be able to be done with the funding that's available, they may come in and add to that.
Okay, alright, that helps a lot. Any other questions? Yes, Peter?
So, the expression of a prioritized list for the, what is the priority we assign to the White Brook football field relative to other priorities?
Well, I'd like to add the pool.
Well, I have the pool written down over here and I just wanted to be sure that I understood your letter, that the pool would be something that would qualify. It seems to me like it would meet the qualifications.
Right, I actually have some information from the state about what qualifies. Can you just pass that down? And assuming that the pool meets the qualifications, I would assume at face value that it does, but we'd have to look into the merits of that specific project.
Right, and I think then, and I guess I'm speaking to anyone who's listening, but specifically to the fellow school committee members, I think that when we approved the proposal that East Hampton Friends of Football brought forward, I think we did that in isolation and not in the context of expressing where it stood on a priority list of other qualifying or possibly qualifying projects on, on school property. So what it sounds to me like, what I'm hearing tonight is that we need to, or I would encourage us to pursue determining if the pool qualified and then to have a, you know, a study is probably too big a word, but at least a thoughtful debate about where the project with the football field lies in terms of priorities relative to the pool.
Well, can I, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So Jamie, looking at this allowable spending purposes, it doesn't appear that a pool is eligible.
Well, it talks about lane and things on, the pool, the pool problem is not really even the pool, it's the air handler on the roof.
Right.
You know, it's a $400,000 repair project. The pool, as we all know, is okay. And the building is okay. It's the fact that we can't exchange air in the building that is stopping us from opening.
So, I don't think we need to decide that right this moment, but it appears that.
I just wanted to clarify that.
That it doesn't.
And then there's a whole bunch of priorities that I'm not privy to and that the school committee probably is, so that the list probably wouldn't just be the two, the pool and the football field, but there would be many other opportunities and.
Well, I think, I really appreciate you coming in this evening, but, and we will obviously have to take this under advisement and discussion, but do you have a date that you need in priorities from us?
Well, like I said, the committee's planning to finish this preservation plan by the end of July and vote on it and approve it. They're looking at right now a draft version of needs and resources compiled from plans and other documents that the city had commissioned over the last 10 or 15 years. After that process, so that's the April meeting, so it'll be, probably by the meeting would be, you know, really good to know. I believe the May meeting is, it's the third.
Whatever, the third, sorry, I'm the chair of CPA, hi.
Hi.
It's the third Thursday of March. Prior to that meeting, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as possible, you know, because then it can become integrated into the draft plans that then will be going, circulating to different boards and committees and departments and, you know, we'll get comments based on what the, what we receive.
And may I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
So Jamie, once we decide on our priorities, do we submit those to you through an application? Is that how that happens? Or do we just give you our list of priorities and what is the procedure?
Well, so the plan is separate from the application. So the plan is, you know, if we had unlimited resources, how would we want to prioritize? Or actually, we have, we have limited resources, so how do we prioritize it? Assuming, once you've gone through the process of prioritizing, then there is an application process that you can then submit to the CPA Committee. So probably one project at a time or whatever the capacity is of the School Department to handle these types of projects.
And so we would need to submit that application to you before your May meeting, is that what I mean?
Well, currently the CPA Committee's trying to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, waiting to the awarding of any money is until after the preservation plan is complete when all of the priorities are sort of set.
I understand that. I'm just trying to determine what we need to get to you by that May meeting.
So, sorry, rather than sit here and show it to you. So the May meeting is when we're going, as a committee, we're going to review the, the plan that Ben has worked on. So we're trying to look at all of the different priorities from all the different areas, so open space, recreation, historic preservation, and affordable housing. So we're trying to get a perspective. So, we're trying to get a perspective about what makes sense for all those different entities within the city, and then when we are awarding money, that's how we're going to try to think about it, because you are all the taxpayers, so we want to make sure that we're taking into consideration everybody else's opinions about what should be prioritized, not just how our seven-person committee thinks about things. So, for the May meeting, your priorities as a school district would be wonderful. If you want to submit a separate application where you're specifically asking us for money for a specific project, you're welcome to do that, but we would not probably review that application for dollars until our June meeting at the earliest, probably not.
So, you just need our priority for that May?
Yes, please.
All right. Okay, I think that makes it very clear.
Sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Then it seems to me that it is not inappropriate for us to put this on our next school committee's agenda, a discussion.
Do we have a meeting in April?
The next meeting is May.
Our next meeting is May fourteenth.
It'll still be ahead of theirs, so.
Ahead of their meeting.
Yes, it will still be ahead of their meeting.
Oh, I thought you said May third.
No, third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
Oh, okay.
So, in just quickly looking at this, I agree with the suggestion that was made, but I wondered about, the suggestion that was made that the pool might not qualify, it specifically says that it does not include horse or dog racing, that I think we're clear on, but the use of land for a stadium, gymnasium, or similar structure, so I don't know, but that reads to me as though the pool might be disqualified there, and I know we're going to talk about this further, but I don't, you know, if we're going to, we have one meeting between now and an expression of our priorities?
Well, I think that we probably, yes, it appears that that will be true.
So, just to throw out a couple of ideas, we've just had a discussion earlier about the fate of the Parsons School structure, I don't know if that applies, and I wonder, looking at the language here in this document, which I've only read quickly, about, given the more, the beyond just school student use of playgrounds immediately adjoining the schools, if that should also be considered in this context. And again, that's just my first quick reading, but I want folks to be thinking about it.
Well, I think what will be appropriate is, if we're going to have this discussion on the May fourteenth meeting, that we will have to come up with our individual ideas and priorities before the May fourteenth meeting to make sure that we all have those. For instance, one from you considering, you know, what you were just talking about. Then, we can come to the May fourteenth meeting with ideas in hand.
Well, should we ask the administration to chime in as well?
Yes. Well, I think she's sitting right here, I think she would know that, yes.
Yes, and I think that what I would want to do is talk to my administrators and have them talk to their school councils in terms of getting input on this, too.
And that's what I'm asking for.
And what we're doing, too, what I will do at my level, is to look at this district-wide. So, district-wide, what is our greatest priorities?
So, I guess, I don't think that necessarily needs to be a motion, but picking up on Mike's suggestion, that's, that's what, the intent of what I mean is, could we get an informed perspective from the, you know, the folks closest to it, and ask the superintendent to share with us in advance of the meeting?
Yes.
A working document saying, this is what the discovery process has allowed us to learn so far. And it's a short window with a couple of other things going on in the interim.
Right. But I think it's also important that we have the opportunity, if you have a particular interest or idea, that you share that.
Sure.
With our superintendent, so that she and her group can explore it and not have it come as a surprise on the fourteenth.
Exactly. Thank you.
Laura?
I was, would have just been in exactly the same vein as Peter. I was hesitant of fielding all this information that evening, sorting through it, prioritizing, and then making a judgment, so I think having that at least a week prior to the meeting to digest and really, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, I would enjoy having the opportunity to meet with the various constituents in the school department and then come up with a recommendation, too, based on that input from.
That'd be great.
And you already have some activity that's going on. I mean, you've got the garden activity at Whitebrook that certainly, you know, may need a little boost. There are plans eventually in the high school to put up some sort of a new ropes course or something like skills course out past the new parking lots, so that would be something, could be something in the future. Clearly, there are elementary playgrounds that we've had lots of volunteers help us with, but they may, they may need more help.
Nancy, could I?
Could I just make a suggestion as well? I know that all of her administrators will be very busy and overtasked at this time of year, but if it's possible, the more information they can provide about the current state of the things that they're proposing would be helpful. Not all of us may be aware of the condition of the football field or the condition of a playground specific to this school or that school.
Right, and so, what I would propose to do is to, you know, get from you your suggestions. I will look into those with my leadership team and have them look into them with their constituents, their school councils, and so forth. And then I will come up with a recommended priority list, which we will do at a district meeting, you know, a district leadership meeting, because that's really the way we make our decisions. We look at it from the district perspective, bring all that information into a leadership team meeting, and then we, as a team, will make some recommendations about what our first priority would be, second, third, and so forth. But we would do our number-one priority clearly.
All right.
And I would presume, and you can just nod, but I presume this will be an annual effort, which we hopefully will coincide with.
Let it be known, they're nodding.
So, that'll tie in with the city's capital planning effort that generally happens in the fall.
Yes.
And so, we've been urging the CPA to get a list going so that we can include it, and so, it seems to me that if you can come up with some asks for this year that, you know, you'll be well-served, then we can expand upon that in the future.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Where are we?
We are, oh, I'm sorry, I'm still with you, Nancy. Take it away.
We're at the DUCI Department of Elementary and Secondary Education District Review. I included in your packet some information. We met with John Roper, who is our liaison with the department for this district review. I think I mentioned this to you earlier in the year. I did try to get it postponed due to all of the events that are occurring this year in our district and the time demands on all of us, but the commissioner was not willing to do that, to postpone it. So, he did give us a choice, or we were given a choice of several dates. I chose a date in May, but then was told that that one didn't work either, so now we have June tenth through the fourteenth as our dates for this review. And if you look at your packet, when Mr. Roper on twenty-two, appendix B is the first, I'm sorry, twenty-one, the appendix A checklist of data documents provided by ESC, when Mr. Roper came and spoke with us, he said that he was actually able to get almost all of this information, much of it from our website, and I do want to share that he said to us that we have a fabulous website, that we have so much information about the schools department and more than, you know, they sometimes encounter when they go to other districts, so we were pleased about that. There are only two things on this list that we need to get for him, the most recent NEAS report and our signed collective bargaining agreement, which, of course, is relatively new. And appendix B, this just gives you an overview of the district task checklist, so, you know, along with everything else, we are going to be asked to gather all of this information and have this ready for the review team when they arrive in June, and you can see this whole list of things, as well as what has to be arranged by the district before the site visit, which is to make administrators, faculty, and staff aware of the visit, its purpose, and the review schedule, private meeting space, access to copier, lunch arrangements. There is no cost to the district, I mean, other than the time and hours that it's going to take us to get ready for this. Appendix C is.
Right, and other than that, Mrs. Lincoln enjoyed the play.
Yes.
Yes.
There's a lot of time here.
Yes, yes, and we don't have a lot of people to do this or a lot of time to accomplish it, but, you know, I think they are, I think they do recognize the amount of things that are going on in this district this year. I think there is an effort on their part to make this as easy for us as possible, but nevertheless, it's not going to be simple. Appendix C is an assessment matrix, they want to know every assessment that we are using in our school district, teacher certification and training of all teachers. Appendix D, appendix E, report of instructional staff attendance, and then you can see the draft site visit schedule. And I give this to you just so that you can read it and look at who they're asking for in these different groups that they're asking, it's four days' worth. In addition to meeting with the different constituent groups, the school committee, parent groups, curriculum, administrators, teachers, union representatives, they will also be doing classroom visitations. So, we will begin now preparing our teachers for what those classroom visitations will look like. They assure us that they will try to be as non-invasive as possible, but you can see there's four pretty busy days' worth of things to do. I'm to choose a liaison to help me, and from my wide array of people to choose from, I've chosen C. Colby, my assistant, to help me, and my curriculum director, Shirley Billfeather, and her assistant will try to help out as well, so that's how we're planning to accomplish this.
And we are to be, to be interviewed also.
Yes, you, as committee members, are to be interviewed also. Yes, LaDon.
How did they come about picking, or is there some sort of criteria for picking these ten this time around?
They are going down through their list of schools. We are a level-three school, so that's one of the reasons we were chosen. We are, as we were informed, we are one of the level-three schools that, districts, rather, that is, is high in the list of level threes, meaning that we aren't, we're not near a level four. But, so they're kind, they're starting there, and then apparently, or apparently, I think they started with level four, the more serious districts in need top of level three, and then I assume they're going to go to level two and level one, but I'm not positive about that.
And do, I mean, at the end of their evaluation, I assume they're putting together a report that we eventually will be privy to?
Yes, in fact, we were told, I've talked to a number of my colleagues who have gone through this district review, and they told me that they were very frustrated by the fact that they oftentimes didn't receive the report on the review until nearly a year later, and that's not of much use to you at that point in time. So, they've tried to streamline the process, and I was assured that we would have the report sometime over the summer, certainly before the fall, so that's certainly an improvement on how it's been done before. And everybody will have access to it, it will be a public document once they've given it to us, we've had a chance to review it and respond to any discrepancies that we see, and you can go online to the department now and see reviews from other districts, the reports, so.
Oh, yes, Nancy, you have a question? I haven't gone online to look at these other reports, but may I assume that they will make recommendations?
Yes.
For improvements?
Yes, they will, and they will do some oral recommendations during the visit before they leave, and then they'll follow up with more detailed written recommendations.
And they'll make those to you, yes?
Yes, and I don't know if it's, I'm not sure the group that they actually sit down with, I don't have that information.
On day four, that, yeah.
All right. And how many come, oh, excuse me, go ahead, Mike.
You can finish your question.
How many come?
A team of four.
Four?
I just wanted to comment that I had the opportunity to hear Secretary Malone on Saturday at the municipal conference that was sponsored by Senator Rosenberg in Northampton. He's been on the job twelve days or something, not very long, went to public schools in Nassauchoosets. I think he understands public schools pretty well. He has agreed to meet with a group of mayors, will wait, he's supposed to contact me, and I'll do the arranging, but, to talk about some of the issues that we see from our collective points of view.
Well, that's a good step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that? You will be getting a letter and more information as we get closer to the date, just explaining what this is going to be and inviting you to a session.
Okay, all right.
Keep smiling.
I am. All right, I wanted to update you on the new high school and open houses that we're going to have for the high school. We have determined that we will do a community open house on April twenty-seventh. The entire community is invited, as are families from neighboring communities who'd like to see our new high school. We're very proud of it, we're very excited about showing off the school. It will start at nine o'clock in the morning, is that right, Laura?
Nine, nine to two.
Nine to two, and end at two o'clock in the afternoon. There will be scheduled tours, probably ten people at a time, so if you're wanting to see the high school, you can come in, register, we'll get you right out on a tour and answer all your questions, so we're really looking forward to showcasing our new high school to the community, very excited about it.
Okay, will the students lead these tours, like they?
We are going to see if there are some students who will have time to lead the tours, and we're also looking for volunteers who would like to help us with the tours. School committee members certainly are welcome to volunteer. We have a very active advisory committee, outreach advisory committee, who we're also hoping will help with the tours, so I think we'll have plenty of tour guys when it's said and done, but don't be surprised if you're contacted to ask for perhaps an hour or two hours of time during the day. We're thinking that people could give an hour of time or perhaps two hours for touring other than the full day. Laura, have I forgotten anything?
Well, they were saying, yeah, they were saying the tour is expected, it's all, you would have talking points, it would be very easy, you shouldn't be nervous about it all, it would be thirty minutes through, and very simple, painless. So, an hour or two would be appropriate, even ninety minutes, something like that.
Exactly, yeah, and we would take anybody who's wanting to help us with the tours through first, and then we'll have the talking points, and so it really is pretty simple.
Okay.
Any questions on any of that? The information about the tours will be on the website, and we will be marketing it, advertising it as well in several different ways, we're working on that now.
Good.
Okay. Then the next is.
Oh, the auction.
Yes, so, we are going to have an auction of surplus items in the old high school. We did have an opportunity, all the school departments were able to go through the old high school and mark anything that they wanted to take to their schools. Then the city departments also went through and were able to mark things that they wanted in the city departments. Those things will all be moved the week of April vacation, and then Saturday, April twentieth, is when we will have the auction of any surplus items that have not yet been claimed. There is a, it's posted on the website, there was an advertisement in the paper already, yes, and it's posted downstairs as well, is it, yes. But please don't hesitate to contact my office if you want any information on it. The things that will be auctioned off are all in this list on the website and in these various locations, there are things such as desks, things that were in our metal shop, and some, few computer desks, and some tools and that kind of thing, but everything is available on our website, a complete list. Mike, do you want to add anything? I've been talking with Mike about this process as well.
No, it'll be a non-professional auction.
Yes.
And it'll move as quickly as we can, but given the list and the space, I would expect that it may be a couple of hours. Come early, bid high.
I had a question about that, and I spoke with Superintendent Follinsby earlier, and Mike, she suggested that I ask you, is there any sense at all that people will bid more or less based on the opportunity to see any of this? I mean, on paper here, some of these items probably have a pretty wide range of their value based on somebody being able to eyeball them, and I'm And I'm just wondering about if you sort of walk into a room and have thirty seconds to decide what you're going to bid, or?
Registration, and the building opens at 9:30, so you have 9:30 to 10:30. We'll identify where we're going, what we're going to be auctioning, where it is.
Okay.
And certainly, people will have a chance to, you know, look at, kick the tires, whatever, for lack of a better term.
I have no auction experience. My only thought was, if somebody looking at the list thinking, you know, I'd rather have fifteen minutes to look at something and think about it than five seconds to decide with somebody, you know, if I was bidding on something there, and I don't know whether that would drive things up and raise more revenue, but it might also slow us down, and I don't know what the balance of that is, so.
We're going to comply with the law and hold an auction.
Right.
Yes, takes all the fun out of it, if you have too much time to think about it.
Sure, I mean, I have no idea. Most of this stuff is going to be relatively small dollars, but again, when I look at some of the items on the list, I think, gosh, that might be worth, you know, more money than just small dollars.
I'm confident that our auctioneer will get the best price possible for all of our items.
Are you the auctioneer, Mike?
Yes, Mike was gracious enough to volunteer a circuit.
We do bike auctions usually every year, although we don't have enough bikes to do an auction this year. And so, it's, we have fun. It's not, it's not the TV show you watch, but it'll be okay. We'll get through it okay.
High-intensity auction, but it will be a good time, I think. All right, and then the last is the.
Well, we are looking for volunteers.
Yes, that's right.
We need people to help with the auction, so a couple of hours on Saturday to give up.
To register, you know, take money, tour people around, yes, so we need lots of volunteers.
People stop so they can bid high and really, you know.
I will, I will volunteer to help. Unfortunately, I'll be in DC, as you know, on the open house for the high school, and I would love to help with that, so I'll try to help with the auction.
Thank you, thank you. The last item on my report is physical education requirements update. I did enclose the letter that I sent to Commissioner Chester. It did go out last Friday, so we haven't received a response yet, but I just wanted to give you a copy of the letter I sent, and.
You know, I couldn't see the copy in mine.
I don't have it.
I just missed it.
No, I don't have it.
I have the document that you shared with us the last time, looking at the older.
I have it in mind. I think that was my error, and I apologize.
You can include it in the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a minute, thank you.
So, it's possible, Nancy, that that'll be on our next meetings.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, one item. Nancy, if you could, although, because I didn't attend, otherwise I would do it, but you did have, at our budget meeting, I was requested to arrange a meeting between school administration and city administration, and I did that, and Nancy was there, and if you could just give us a little synopsis of how that went.
Certainly, certainly. I think we had a very good meeting. Mike did arrange for all the department heads to get together, and what we talked about were the needs in each of our departments and how, you know, for a long time, we really have been trying to do the best we can with limited funds, that there are really some serious needs in every department. And, you know, I think in East Hampton, we really do have a can-do attitude. We try to make the best of every situation and do what we can with the funds that we're given and still deliver, you know, the services and programs that our community need and that our students need. And so then we talked about some various ways of addressing our funding gaps, and, you know, we decided that, and of course, we didn't come to any conclusions, but we decided that we would meet again and that we would continue to try to discuss ways that we could actually, you know, I think that one of the things that came out is that it's important for all of us to tell the stories to the community about what we face. And I think that what we learned in talking together was the difficulties that each department faces. And so I think it was enlightening for all of us. I think it was, there was a real collaborative spirit, and everyone felt that it was a useful process and wanted to do it again. So, you know, that's kind of where we are.
Excellent. Thanks. Well, I think that takes us to matter fraction.
Hi.
Minutes? Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 26, 2013.
Second.
But, sorry, public hearing and regular session.
Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
So moved.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? That, so accepted.
And motion to approve the special session meeting on March 22, 2013.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of presenting the, of accepting the minutes as presented of the special meeting, joint convention, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained?
Abstained.
So passed or accepted.
And let's see here, words of the year. Move to approve the school payroll dated April 4, 2013, in the amount of $497,559.37.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the school payroll dated April 4, 2013, in the amount of $497,559.37, with the notation that there was a revision in the payroll amount previously signed due to a software problem. Correct?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All seconded.
Second.
Thank you. It is passed.
Move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April 4, 2013, in the amount of $207,193.33.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated April 4, 2013, in the amount of $207,193.33. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is passed. All right, thank you, dear. I think we also have an out-of-state request for a field trip. Do I hear a motion? Wait, I'm trying to find it, hold on. Where are they going?
Mystic.
Oh, Mystic, okay.
It's the marine biology curriculum.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, oh, here it is. All those in favor of the out-of-state field trip to Mystic, Connecticut, requested, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are going, it is passed. Oh, Nancy, I have to turn to you on this one, there is school choice.
Yes, the school committee needs to vote to approve our district as a school choice district. I did talk with my leadership team about whether they were able to let me know or let you know at this point in time what slots they might have open, but as we still don't have our final budget numbers, they decided that they really can't do that until we have those numbers and we know how many teachers we'll have. So, we will just, this evening, vote to be a school choice district.
Okay, the chair entertains a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that East Hampton schools continue to be a school choice district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are indeed a school choice district.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We are adjourned. Oh, well, we're adjourned, but I have an informal announcement that we, I believe everyone got the email from Sue about our work session, our date, so it will be six o'clock on May 28.